All right, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for joining us for the March 25th Board of Education meeting. If you could all join me with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will start this evening with our special acknowledgements, Rye Recognitions of Excellence Awards, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you for being here. We are delighted to begin tonight's meeting by honoring two extraordinary Rye High School students. The Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards were created in 2012 to recognize students who have achieved great things in the arenas of academics, arts, and athletics. Tonight, we honor two Rye High School seniors who have been named candidates in the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established in 1964 by executive order of then-President Lyndon Johnson to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished graduating seniors. In 1979, the program was extended to recognize students who demonstrate exceptional talent in the visual, creative, and performing arts. In 2015, the program was again extended to recognize students who demonstrate ability and accomplishment in career and technical education fields. And each year, up to 161 students are named as Presidential Scholars, one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. Presidential Scholars candidates are initially selected based on their SAT or ACT results and outstanding scholarship. The candidates are invited to submit applications, which include essays, self-assessments, secondary school reports, and transcripts. Semi-finalists and non-semi-finalists will be notified in mid-April. Scholars and non-scholars will be notified in May. To be named a Presidential Scholars candidate is a rare and special distinction. Sean Yu, Rye High School, class of 2022, and a talented cellist, was a U.S. Presidential Scholar in the arts. The last time that Rye High School had a U.S. Presidential Scholar candidate prior to that was 2017. And we are so very proud of the two Rye High School seniors who have earned this distinction. So please come forward as I call your name. Andrew Chung. Kiran Gudan Kovas. Our warmest congratulations to you both. Your success is reflective of a great deal of hard work and dedication, not only but by you yourselves, but also by your parents, your teachers, and the school district community at large. And now, if you'll allow us to take a few photos of you, we would be very appreciative. And Mr. Hara, if you can come on up, that would be... Mom's, Dad's, parents, come on up. And Ms. Durman's also going to take photos, and she'll share them with you.
All right. It's always so wonderful to have an opportunity to celebrate our students. So congratulations again, students. We're very proud of you. We will now move on to the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our March 25th Board of Education meeting. Just have to note, the new table skirts are terrific. That's a new addition, first meeting. Recognizing student achievement, whether it be in academics, the arts, or athletics, is one of the best things we do at Board of Education meetings. I hope to have many more Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards to hand out between now and the end of the school year. It is time, end of season, to talk about athletics, and all of our winter sports teams have now concluded their seasons. I'd like to congratulate the boys varsity basketball team, the girls varsity basketball team, the varsity hockey team, the boys and girls indoor track teams, and the wrestling team, all of whom made it into the finals, and in several cases, really far into the finals. This afternoon, I toured the new softball field and was blown away by the new design. The sod will be arriving at the end of the week, and I'm so excited to see the girls out there in a few weeks, once the field is 100% complete. What an incredible transformation. Later this afternoon, I stopped by at the literacy committee meeting, and it was one of the most satisfying events of the year for me so far. Watching the K-2 teachers analyzing the data collected in the phonics pilot was stunning. What wonderful progress and growth in our literacy program. The growth demonstrated in the data was just incredible. Kudos to Tricia, the instructional coaches and teachers for transforming our early literacy instruction. Similarly, I listened in as our upper-grade teachers were providing feedback on a draft grammar lesson, scope, and sequence. Another amazing development. I didn't even tell you about that one. I just didn't want to give you too much. I wish to thank those members of the community who took time out of their busy schedules to join us here in the middle school multipurpose room earlier this evening for our annual Community Budget Cafe. In the past, we would hold these on Saturday mornings, but switched it to a weeknight evening starting last year in hopes that it would make it easier for folks to attend. So just to thank you, while it was a small but mighty group, we thank those who were able to attend earlier this evening. And tonight, we continue our deep dive into specific budget areas of interest to the public. This week, we will hear presentations about the technology, athletics, and facilities portions of the budget. I will share links to the presentations in my weekly updates, and you can also find them on the district website under the Business and Finance Department tab. And that concludes my report for this evening.
All right. Great. Thank you, Dr. Byrne, and I certainly look forward to an update on all of that wonderful data related to our literacy and maybe even a preview of some grammar stuff. It's always exciting stuff. All right. So speaking of exciting things, we will move on to presentations and discussions. And it looks like we're going to start this evening with the Technology Budget Presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to present on behalf of the entire department the Technology Budget Overview for 2526. I want to start by just thinking... Here we go. I want to start just by thanking the entire department. And so while I'm here presenting on everyone's behalf, it takes a really large team to do everything that we do day in and day out. So thanking Colleen, who's my assistant, who just keeps my calendar flowing every day, to Carolyn and Kim, who's our instructional coaches, that really work closely with our students and teachers to just make sure all the technology you're going to hear about tonight gets integrated in a meaningful and purposeful way. And we want to thank our data team, Megan and Michael, who keep our systems streamlined and in place and things flowing very efficiently, to our engineers in Edge Tech, all the hard work they do. We have Stephen Amy here, our operations manager, our head, Lee Dillon, and all of our engineers in each of the buildings that just support our teachers and students day in, day out. So while I'm presenting on behalf of the entire team, it takes the entire team to do this work. When I think about technology and all the tenants of the Rye commitment, so we are focusing on our students, our faculty, our staff, and our community. And so when we think about students, we always thinking about how are we pushing them as critical thinkers, as problem solvers, as collaborators? And technology infuses all those different aspects that you're going to hear tonight, but that's in the forefront for our thinking and learning when we're putting technology initiatives in place. When we're thinking about our faculty and staff, we're not just thinking about throwing new things at them. We want to plan and design with them. And so that's really important for us, that any professional learning, any designs, any commitment that we're making is really done in a meaningful way that integrates the entire organization. And then for students, our role with this, with the Rye commitment, sorry, with the community, is to just really make sure that we're educating them on what all of our goals and initiatives are across the district, and they're informed of what's happening. So I heard there was a little challenge going on with our icons. And so when I first submitted my first draft to Dr. Byrne, he sat down and said, "I have some really big feedback for you." And I got a little nervous. And he said, "You have to change the red arrows because that just doesn't cut it." So I took the feedback. But you're going to hear tonight the different tenants of what our operating budget does for the technology. We are making sure that we are physically responsible with the monies and how it's spread across all those different areas of technology that we just talked about, how we're providing excellence in teaching and learning for all of our teachers, our students, our administrative tasks, our community, that we are providing academic growth when we integrate technology in all aspects of things that we're doing, that it's at the forefront of our thinking, and that we're just, as I said again, physically responsible with our budget. And so really making sure, and you're going to hear in a little bit, just about our infrastructure and our work from that top down, that making sure that if all those systems are secure and in play, we're able to do the things that we need to do with students and teachers and faculty. So hopefully, these icons win for the night, but I heard Rob has a few things up his sleeve, so we'll see. Our focus areas, as you're going to hear, are is going to be about our different district infrastructure. So start off, we're going to talk about cybersecurity. You're going to hear about our instructional technology practices, all the professional learning that we've been doing across the district. You're going to hear a lot of upgrades with our innovative spaces and how that's been integrating with technology and what these spaces are, look like, and what teachers and students are doing in the space. You're going to hear about the Technology Committee and the tall task that they were given this year around AI, and then also in regards to our data systems. Okay. So we're going to start with our district infrastructure. And so the first component that I want to talk about of what we're doing this year is this summer was a really tall task for us in terms of rewiring the entire high school and middle school. And so we were able with that work to really think about strategically with our plan, where our current server closets are listed, if they made sense in classrooms, if we needed to move them out of those spaces, if we needed to strategically put them in a building, this was the time to do that work. So we spent a lot of planning time. The last time you heard us for the budget round, of designing and actually implementing that work, and this summer, we did it. Edge Tech was instrumental in getting us in a couple of weeks up and running, and, like I said, rewiring the entire high school, middle school, moving us to CAT 6A, CAT cabling, upgrading all of our closets, building new closets. So our main closet now is on a totally different location than it was before, which I'm saying very easily that that's something to do. But if you were here all over the summer to see the AC units that had to be moved to get that work done, cables through the ceiling, guys working 24/7, we couldn't have done it without them. But because of that, now we can say that our buildings map in a strategic way that makes sense and also doesn't impede on classroom and instruction because those pieces of equipment that should not be in a classroom are no longer there. And so we're really proud of that design. I don't know how often you get an opportunity to be a part of that, but our operations team did a lot of work around what that would look systematically. With that, then came just naturally upgrading servers and systems, making sure that we had the right configurations and the right setup in each of those closets for what we needed across the district. Device management is always something that's really important to us, and so making sure we start clean every year. So we're touching over 2,000 devices in terms of imaging them from scratch, making sure they're ready to go for the next school year, and teachers have all the software that they need. We've also worked with Edge Tech and our facilities department to make sure that our Promethean boards are getting up and running, and thank you, Rye Fund, for all of their support with that grant that they have supported us with that. But that's been a really tall task for us in terms of strategically making sure when we're putting them into classrooms that it makes sense instructionally. And so we're not just putting them back in rooms that maybe a smart board would be, that they're aligned in the proper location, students have great visual components when they're seeing the board, and it makes sense for the entire space. And Rob and his team would do a lot of facilities work on his end in terms of making sure they're secure that they, in the way that they need to be. You know, he'll talk about it in his presentation, but there was just a lot of coinciding of planning with the two departments. Wireless optimization is something that we're constantly working on within this district. Over the summer, our engineers worked thoroughly in our buildings to conduct heat map tests to just really look at wireless access and where our great points are and where are things for continued growth that we need to work on. And so having these maps really help us in terms of future planning, what this design would look like and what the need is as we grow our mobile devices and students and just individuals within each of our buildings. We have a clearer picture of what that could look like. Security and filtering, we were able to move off of Rocket and move on to RealLife. So just again, keeping these infrastructure things as new technologies come out, making sure that we are up to date with what all the needs are. We deployed over the summer and into the fall with all our teachers' MFA. So now we're secure based on our cyber audit last year, really thinking about two-step authentication and how we need to be secure in accessing certain systems. And so it was a tall task that everyone in Rye was so instrumental in helping us roll out. Everyone was cooperative. They're doing it. It takes a couple of extra minutes, but we spent time explaining the security needs behind it and how it would protect them and us as an organization. And so everyone just rolled up their sleeves, and now we have that in place across the district for our Google Workspace, which is incredible to say, that everyone was able to do that so quickly. And then for our iPads, we just moved to a totally different environment with our iPad environments. We're working a lot with, you'll hear in a few minutes, about our digital art initiative with our iPads and Procreate, and just setting them up in an environment where students now have access to different platforms in a more shared global environment that's more secure for us. So that's a little bit about our infrastructure. With that all in place and set up that it needs to be, we're able then to do the instructional technology stuff that sounds a little bit more exciting and a little bit more fun. It's not talking about wires. It's not talking about servers. It's not talking the stuff in the ceiling or behind the walls. It's the stuff that we see students engaging with and teachers engaging with, which is really exciting. But in order to do that, we need this stuff to be in place and up to par in order to carry these initiatives forward. So this year, we've been working very hard on AI. You've heard AI from me from the last couple of meetings, but it's really exciting work. And we've expanded a lot of our subscriptions and a lot of our supports around teaching of what AI integration could look like at the teacher level and the student level here in Rye. So we're really excited for that to continue. We've done a lot with our Media Tools Grant. Again, thank you to the Rye Fund for supporting that. And we've been launching Authentic Projects, district-wide K-12 for all of our teachers. And to see the tools that they are using to create these authentic projects with their students has been pretty incredible. We've been busy with developing digital citizenship curriculum lessons at the elementary schools. As you've known, over the years, we've progressed and grown our scope and sequence. And now we're also looking to develop that in our Rye middle school classes. And so we launched in the fall a lot of work in some of our electives around digital citizenship, which has been great to see now that consistency at a fifth grade into sixth grade for students. We were busy when we took on our new Mystery Science curriculum at the elementary level, working with our elementary coach to ways that we could better integrate some STEAM and Maker activities into Mystery Science and use the Makers spaces. So that's been a really great test to see our teachers utilizing those components. As we said, the facility side supported us with installing the Promethean boards, but now to see actually students and teachers engage with the software and the hardware itself when they're in the classroom is really great to see those interactions with teaching, especially when you go into an ICT classroom and we have two boards in the space and we're able to pull small groups, and they're able to utilize all the technology in just different ways. It really lends itself to all the needs that teachers need for the classrooms. And then our AI professional development, we're really excited. We are launching an AI institute this summer. And so we've been really busy planning and designing that for our faculty and staff. So more information on that to come, but it's been a great opportunity just to keep pushing our thinking around what AI could look like in Rye. And then just from a streamlined standpoint, with all the things that are happening within Rye here, within the district, we know that there's always support that's needed. And so that's where engineers are instrumental in making sure that teachers do not wait, administrators do not wait, students do not wait. That support is almost immediate in terms of communication, problem solving, working with students to get them up and running. So we're really proud of all the different opportunities we have for our help desk. We have one for our faculty and staff that's been from day one. Our student help desk is packed every day, but it's great to see that students know now. They know where to go. They can advocate for themselves. They know where the help desk is, and they're just able to put in tickets and get support immediately, which we love to see. And then our parent help desk, our community help desk, is also very fluid as well. They can just pop in, ask a question, and then we resolve their answers, whether it's through a meeting or a phone call with me, whatever it may be, making sure they're just their answers. We have answers to their questions. So those are supports that we continue to just talk about each year because they're growing, and they're really vital to just keeping everything flowing the way that we want to. With all of that happening right now, thinking about ways that the budget is going to support additional initiatives next year, if we go back to our district infrastructure. Next year, we will be working on the two new wings, so Osborne and Midland. Those will be coming soon. And with the new building comes new wiring and new infrastructure that needs to go into play in those two schools. So we'll be busy that summer again, cabling. I feel like we talk about cabling every year, but it's all great things that are happening around those designs and those systems. With that cabling comes setting up new servers and new hardware and new equipment in each of those locations, just to making sure that we're fully functional in those areas. We are at to a point in device management within our district where we are ready to do a replacement cycle with our desktop computers. So as we're installing more and more Prometheans, we're replacing our normal desktops with mini desktops in the classrooms, and then also now looking to see what we're transitioning to for our office spaces. So that is a project that will be a large project to take on this summer, but is something that we are starting to embark on. With that, we're also coming to a point where mobile devices need to be replaced. They're up in cycles. So our fifth grade at the elementary schools will start to be replaced with Chromebooks. Our incoming sixth grade will get new Chromebooks. So there's always just a lot of movement in regards to hardware that's happening within the district. In terms of Promethean boards, we're excited. We're going to continue with the installation of that over the summer. Again, thank you, Rye Fund, for your support for that piece. And then wireless optimization, as I said before, we're fortunate this year to do a lot of work around design for heat maps to figure out where our strength points are and then where our areas of growth are. And so this summer, we'll be implementing some of those areas where we know that there's needs and impacts to just make it a little bit more of a seamless environment for all of our end users. From the instructional side for our AI, we are working on developing a strategic plan for AI. We've been doing so much work this year and last year around AI in terms of professional learning, knowledge for ourselves and our PD team. And now it's important for us to come up with a strategic plan that just houses all the information in one place. So whether you're new to the district, whether you're just wondering what AI looks like here, it'll be a formalized plan. So not that we're just starting to think about AI, but it's going to be a place that we're going to house all the great work that we've been doing in this one strategic plan document. So more information to come on that. We're working on it. Our AI integration, we've been growing our tools. And so as more get approved from ED Law 2D, as we continue to evaluate them, we're looking to expand some subscriptions for next year with professional learning around what those tools look like and how teachers and students would integrate them. We're also, we've been working heavily on lessons. So this year, we focused on digital citizenship and literacy in our library classes and our sixth grade middle school electives classes. Next year, we're taking it one step further, and we are also incorporating AI. So our library media specialists have been working on, with me, on our scope and sequence to think about where that fits in our curriculum K-5. And so we are designing those lessons right now. And we are also working in another elective class in middle school for incoming sixth grade around passion projects and talking about research and design in AI and how that will fit into this passion work. So we're excited to roll out those lessons in the fall for the teachers. And then also, we will just be continuing Makerspace learning of how we can continue to integrate STEAM and STEM into the science lessons that we have with Mystery Science, and then also continuing around the Promethean work for interactive software. As you can imagine, technology grows and changes every day. So now Promethean is coming out with a new board, which is great. It's called the Active Panel 10. It always changes. So there's some new grade enhancements that are coming out. So we're designing some professional learning for our teachers on those, so they're up to speed for when that comes out as well. And again, just continuing the help desk, it sounds the same. Not much will change in terms of structure for it, but just continuing the communication and messaging around that we're here to support you in those three buckets if anyone were to need it, community, faculty, staff, or students. So security has also been a really big piece within our district. This year, we were able to successfully complete a lot of different tasks around security. All of our Salto locks now in all five buildings have been installed. And so we're very excited to see that system up and running district-wide. We finished our PA integration in all of our school buildings as well. So all the big clocks that you see in the area, in the space at least, are in all of our school buildings. They're fully connected now. Our systems are integrated. So in an emergency, when needed, systems will talk to each other. Alerts will be notified. Administrators are notified. And so it's just great to have one cohesive system now where we're not working in piecemeal by different buildings. So we're really proud of that work. Again, our engineers worked really hard to do all that configuration setup this summer. And we're also continuing to, we've deployed this year as well, Cisco phones was a couple of years ago, after doing some evaluation and discussion with building administrators, just thinking about what other space could use phones, just in case we needed to have some communication. So we did walkthroughs of each of the buildings, and we decided that some of our common spaces would need some phones, and so that was implemented and carried out this year as well. For next year, which will be in the budget to support the 2526, is going to be looking at installation of Salto and PA systems at our newly constructed wings, so making sure that technology is mirrored at Osborne and Midland in the new construction zones. We are now at the point where we will be doing assessments of our camera system district-wide to just think about as technology advances, what other pieces are out there. And so we're taking a look at some of those different areas and some of the different vendors that we may engage with. We're going to be looking at upgrades for Salto. There's, again, technology upgrades. So we're on RF. We're going to BlueNet, just different ways that technology communicates with each other. But we were informed that we need to start making that shift, so we're glad that we've already pre-planned and budgeted for it. And then we'll continue to work with Rye PD to enhance our portable radio functionality across all the buildings. So it sounds like a lot, but as you know, technology changes constantly, and so these are things we're just keeping up with. I think Jane's head hurts.
I keep turning and asking a question, like, didn't we, like, we haven't finished? And so the idea...
We finished, and now we're starting.
Well, and we haven't finished, but yet we have to go back and refresh what we haven't even finished installing. And I get it, but it just makes me feel really old, and I'm not really old, but I feel really, really old when I hear these kinds of things that are happening. Sorry.
It sounds crazy, right? But Salto started in the district in 2020. So the network and the infrastructure that supports all of those locks...
Is already updated.
...is now at a place where, similar to wiring, it's now the next generation of wiring and support that's behind all of those locks, and we're falling behind already.
I mean, and it's crazy, right? We're falling behind, and we're just actually, like, I was quite chuffed. I was like, oh, we got Salto's everywhere. We're Salto's set! And it's like, get, no, you're not. Right? Yeah, that was a funny game. It's just, it's...
Believe me, when she comes in my office and tells me that, too, I have those moments myself. I've had the opportunity to do it behind closed doors.
And here I sit.
Yeah. When she points to the door and she's like, "Get out." I'm like, "Okay, I'll come back later." No, but one thing I will have to say, as quick as it's changing, when I'm really proud with our team and is always thinking ahead of what's coming, and... And so not to have to come to this table to say we're behind the eight ball, we haven't planned. This was already in the proposed operating budget for next school year, knowing that our engineers have done the research behind the scenes to say this is coming, we need to prepare for it. And so we have, and so it is in the budget. We're ready for it. It seems like a quick change, but that's something I'm really grateful for, that everyone's always thinking about the future and not just where we currently are. From a cybersecurity standpoint, so this year we're continuing with our Phase 2 audit. So as last year, we worked with a vendor called Redpoint. And so since we did really well in our audit last year, they have said to us, and it's great professional learning for us. We've opted into this. It's not something we've been told to do, but it's really good for us to see the areas and growth points that we're doing well in. And then just an overall organization, what are things that we can grow and do better? And so for us, that's really helpful with cybersecurity changing all of the time. You want to make sure your infrastructure network is secure as possible. We want to make sure that these things are in play. So it's great professional learning for our team. So we are engaging in Phase 2 with Redpoint right now. We're going through that process. They are doing what's called a NIST cybersecurity audit where they take a look at all of our documentations, our procedures, our internal processes, and they do a full scope and an evaluation and a test, internal test. So we're hopeful that the recommendations will be provided to us in the coming weeks. And it'll just show again, as I said, growth points of what the district is doing really well, and then other ways that we can just mature in our cybersecurity posture. So we're hoping to have that by the end of April. With that in mind, then thinking about the following year and planning ahead, we would be implementing the recommendations from Redpoint that we've been doing every year. And then also thinking about what our Phase 3 audit would look like. And again, probably some additional penetration testing, things on the network that we can just test and can constantly make sure we're up to standard with NIST. Cause those are, like, teachers have their standards, these are the standards that we're abiding by from a infrastructure cybersecurity standpoint. So we will be bringing that to you next year and also making some recommendations at the Technology Committee about that, what that would look like in the future. When we talk about professional learning within the district, our coaches have been instrumental in all the things that you've been hearing, really pushing out the learning for our teachers and students. And so whether they're meeting with our faculty and staff in small groups, whether they're having department meetings, whether they're just doing a coaching cycle, they're meeting with teachers one-on-one, or running in-service classes, they are constantly with our faculty, sharing these initiatives, coaching them, providing support, and really being the cheerleaders that we need for all of this work that are, that's being done. In addition, we've also continued with our communications. So we have our quarterly bulletins, we have our Tech Tip Tuesdays. We've been attending several national conferences just to keep up with our own professional learning in terms of what can we do and where do we push teachers and where are we going with instructional tech moving forward? So that's been great learning for us this year. And these are just some of the in-service classes that you can see on the screen that we've offered. So we've had amazing turnout in every single one of our classes, full capacity. We've been doing a lot of work around media creation, just working with our teachers on designing, really anything from lessons to creative projects to authentic challenges. We've had several classes filled to the max around AI. We've done two Level Ones and one Level Two. Next year we'll be launching Level Three. A ton of work around mastering Prometheans in the classroom. We've had a year-long practicum this year that we've ran on digital portfolios and that has been a great class. So working with Dr. Murray to think about ways to expand that more globally to all of our users across the district. We've had parent universities that have been really successful. And again, we've had our normal elementary and secondary STEAM nights. And so those we were really proud of this year. When we think about initiatives of where we're going next year, we're going to continue with our normal communication. We're going to continue with how we support teachers and students in the classroom, but we are going to introduce some new topics around our professional learning. So AI and Research is going to be a class that we focus on, could be a practicum for a year, it could just be a traditional in-service, but AI will be a big focus again next year. So AI and Research, our AI Level Three, our AI around authorship in the classroom, which is really thinking about like ethics and how do we use it responsibly? The power of differentiation in the classroom with AI in terms of differentiation, you're differentiating your lessons, working in small groups. The two tools that we have right now that teachers are getting heavily trained in is Magic School and Different. We are hoping to expand some of our tools next year as long as they pass the ED Law 2D test. If they do, then we'll be looking at that as well. Continuing, as we just said, Promethean is slightly changing their software, so providing additional supports for teachers around some of the new tools that are out there. And then always upgrading anything new with our Google Workspace and media creation tools. In addition to all the great tech things that we've seen across the district, we're actually able to see all this come to life in our innovative spaces. And so when we opened the Media Center this year, when we opened the Innovative, the I-Lab in the high school, it was awesome to just see teachers and students in there. Those spaces are packed all the time. They're utilizing the small breakout rooms, they're utilizing the Promethean boards. You can go into the I-Lab when it's not being booked by a full class and you will always find a small group of students working in a breakout room, working on homework, collaborating, problem solving, working on a project together, just going up to the boards and using it as just a whiteboard or a brainstorm. And so it's really awesome to see that now they have access to this, they're heavily utilizing it, not only when a teacher is present, but on their own time. And so we're really excited for the work that's been done in all these spaces. Next year, we're going to be adding even more. So I'm really excited to report on all the work that we've been doing with the building principals. So I've been meeting with all of the building principals to talk about the active learning spaces that we're going to grow in each of their, in their buildings. And then coupling that with again, the integration of the technology in those spaces. So to just give you a little bit of some statistics of what's happening in each of the schools. Milton, we're working on four classroom designs this year and we're being really methodical with how we're thinking about it. So we started with fifth grade, we're doing fourth, and then we're going to third, all the way eventually down to K. But we're doing, working that process through with each of the teachers. At Osborne, we're doing the new wing plus third and fourth grade. Midland, we're doing the new wing in third grade. Middle School is getting 11 new classrooms. So there's just a lot of work that's being done. These are some of the drawings that you'll just see. It's not work that the building administrator and myself just do together. We bring in each of the teachers to build a design team, to talk about what are your needs structurally with kids, the types of furniture you would like to see, the type of technology you would need to support that work. We brainstorm with the vendors that come in, they do renderings and drawings for each of the spaces. We agree upon that. We don't change the color palette too much from the work of the bond, but it's really great to kind of see the ownership that every teacher has in the design of their spaces. And so while this may be a little bit slower in terms of like trajectory that we're not doing all at once, it's really methodical in thinking about how everyone has a voice in what we're designing and that it's purposeful.
Dr. Sesson, sorry. So I'm looking at these sketches. I just want to make sure, we're not, when you're talking about creating spaces, we're not adding walls.
Correct.
We're using furniture to establish spaces.
Correct. Absolutely. Yep. Nothing from a facility standpoint, or at least on my end, Rob could talk about that later, but we are not knocking anything down. We are just taking out furniture that does not meet the needs of the students in the classroom, redesigning it and talking to, with that work happening, putting in those Promethean boards or making sure the mobile technology is up to speed and date of what they need in that classroom.
And essentially, you know, we've talked about this for a long time, for years and years and years in schools, the only thing that could happen in a classroom was whatever the room allowed it to happen. So if there were 32 desks or 30 desks that were jammed into the room that could not move, you generally had a teacher that stood at the front of that room and lectured or focused the lesson from there. What these active learning spaces do is that they allow within minutes, you know, two or three minutes, reconfigure the entire classroom so that it can support a range of teaching modalities. So one day if you want lecture, you can set it up that way. If you have kids working in partnerships or triads or large groups or small groups, it's so easy to do that because the furniture dictates it. And it's also using the furniture as an instructional tool as opposed to just a place to put a body, which is what it historically been in classrooms. So it's very exciting work.
In each of the spaces too, we've also moved away from just ownership of like my materials and my things and building a sense of community in the space. So a lot of the furniture, you won't see desks anymore where there's storage underneath it. We're building storage capacity in other ways so that students are using everything in the classroom as like a communal environment and not just a standalone. From there, we're also working on our data systems. And so this year we've done a lot in terms of some of the bullets that I'll go through, really working with our counseling department in the high school to look at Naviance, which is one of our systems that we use in the high school with students. And we've found a lot of ways to just sync and streamline data that students need to enter, that we need to enter into our student information system, that also needs to go into Naviance. So we've really looked to streamline that process for our faculty, our students, and our staff. And we've had a lot of success with how that is set up now. We've been collaborating with our building administrators on the scheduling process to just kind of streamline what that looks like in the building and also with our gradebook process, which has been really successful to implement those new features. We're using systems that help us now with rostering students in classes with software. And so really just thinking about automation, how do we automate a lot of the systems that we have in play so that things are backing up overnight, they're syncing and it's not a manual entry from some individual at central office to do that work. And so that's been really one of the biggest goals that we've been talking about in any of these bullets you'll see here is automation and efficiency. We've been working with Registra to integrate new tracking fields in our systems for the registration process, which has been really helpful. We've transitioned RYE Middle School for our student course request process this year. It used to be done in a Google form. And again, all of that information then had to be manually entered into our CIS, which was just a lot of work on the backend and with some training and some support, we were now able, where our middle school students now just go into Power School, into the app and pick their course selection, which then drives the master schedule because it will drop it right in there and then we design on the backend. So just these small efficiencies have really helped us in terms of being able to do all this work a little bit in a more timely manner. For next year, for 2526, which you'll see, which will support the budget, I'm really excited about this feature that's coming out in Power School. So Power School is actually doing a facelift for the entire interface for all of our administrator and clerical staff. So that will be a lot of training and prep work that we are going to be doing over the summer. But with that, they are coming out with a graduation tracker planner, which we are going to be implementing in the counseling department at the high school so that we can track every student from middle school up in regards to just courses that they've taken, a design and implementation plan of what could be coming next, just making sure we have prerequisite classes fulfilled, electives that are needed. We're making sure we're hitting all of those markers for graduation requirements. So we're excited to implement that and work with the counseling department on that rollout. Again, really about mainstreaming automation and efficiencies is a lot of what these bullets will talk about, but the graduation and the Power School interface are two of the biggest changes that we'll see from the data systems next year.
Caitlin, can I, can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
So for the Power School piece, is there any change that would impact how a student or a parent would use the system?
No. So this is only facing for administrators, staff, and, and our clerical workers.
Okay.
Yep. Let me pause and say, at the moment, no.
Right, right, right.
By July, I don't know if something would change, but no, as of right now, it's just on the end user, but it will not impact student or parents for what we're being told.
Well, sorry, while, while we paused and we're on this slide. Automating attendance processes, that again is for the end user, not for the parent?
Not for the parent or for the student, for how we track attendance within our system, the reporting side of it.
Is there any hope that they would change or allow some of these things to be able to be used as a, as a parent to?
I can definitely find out right now, the real piece around that is how we collect it from each of the courses and teachers at the end of the day and then how we get it up to the state. And so the way that Power School collects it right now is just a little tedious for us to go through. So they're working on efficiencies from the reporting side to the state. But those are always things that we ask, we will definitely look at to see if there's any benefits or any changes made on the other end user side.
You're wondering if they're, if they're gonna have a mechanism for you to report-
To do.
Yes. And so we don't have three different ways to report at three different schools. Or a tardy, or a late, or right, all of those things, yeah.
All of our codes. And then to sum it up with our Technology Committee, so this year, I'm pleased to share that we had over 25 members on the Technology Committee, which was a great turnout. Our focus or our task was to design AI guidelines that would focus on ethical use, data privacy, AI in the classroom, teacher support and training, and then overall student use. And so the committee worked really hard, it's only March, to actually have guidelines, review them several times, make modifications. And we're really proud that we're going to be presenting them to our larger faculty and staff at our April faculty meeting. And so we think this is the first step in the right direction in terms of explaining what this would look like and how we're going to use it and the benefits. And just making sure that again, this is part of our strategic plan moving forward, continuing the professional learning and the design around AI in education. For the 2526 focus, so the Technology Committee this year also discussed that while AI is not stagnant and will always change, one of the goals of the Tech Committee moving forward is yearly, we'll be reviewing the guidelines and making sure that there are no modifications or edits that need to be made. So that will always now be a focus of the committee to go back and look at those, that document and make sure it's up to date. But in addition to that, we're coming to a place where our technology plan is up next year. So we have a five-year technology plan. And so we started that in 21 with focuses of different learning goals within the district. They entail, and they're here on the screen, making sure that we have a secure, robust infrastructure, which is something that we're constantly looking at, making sure that we are integrating instructional technology. And some of the ways this year that we're going to collect some of that data, ways that we do do that is through learning walks. When we're in the classrooms, looking at how teachers are integrating and talking to teachers about what the needs are, we're really able to see what's happening in the classrooms with student use and teacher use. A lot of the times our coaches are working, whether they're designing and planning with teachers or just supporting the work that's happening in the classroom, they're able to give us feedback on how technology is being integrated and used across the different classrooms. As our technology department, end of the year, we send out a survey and we talk to teachers about like, what are the needs of instructional tech moving forward? What can we support them with in the following year? What are softwares that they are using? What are things that they'd be interested in moving forward with? So with all this data that we collected this year, having that information to help drive the conversations for the technology plan next year will be really helpful for us. This data allows you to either modify and rewrite an entire new plan or just make edits and modifications where needed. But that's something we'll discuss as we look through this data and determine where are we as a district? Do we need to shift and modify our goals? Do we just need to make some slight modifications and edits? That'll be a lot of work of the committee next year to have a new plan in place for June, again, another five-year vision for what that looks like.
Sorry, Caitlin, can I ask one more question on this slide? So I know we have the New York State Digital Equity Survey that we have to do every single year. What kind of response do you get from that? Do you feel like you get, like, from a percentage? Cause I know it goes to parents also.
It's very low. I would say if we get 5 to 10% of people responding to it, it's not everything. And we send it out three, four, or five times.
Right.
But it's not something that ever we get a big push for.
So you don't get, you don't get a ton of data that you can use from that?
We don't. And that survey has changed slightly from the state of what it used to be. So now it's more just around access.
Right.
In terms of usage, it used to be asking more questions around like, how do you feel? Are you comfortable using technology? How proficient would you scale yourself in using it? Now it's more from the lens of do you have access? And so do, does a family need support in gaining technology, whether it's just in school, at home, internet, what does that look like in terms of the makeup? And so we will get some responses for maybe those that are in need or just fill it out, but it, usually the turnout is not big. So I would say about 10%, if that, every year.
Thanks.
Yep. So with all of that conversation, whether we're talking about the infrastructure, the instructional technology, the committee, security, these are all things that you've these are all things that you've heard tonight that are going to be driving our budget for next year. So on the, in the different lines that you see up here, from our infrastructure and equipment line to our software line to support all of the district initiatives that are happening at a software level, to our durable materials from all the supports of replacing hardware and equipment, mobile technology, desktops. These are, you know, what we need in order to keep the department flowing. So I want to thank you for your time and I'll open it up to questions.
Great, thank you. It is always overwhelming the amount of things that fall under technology and the vast scope, right? From the hardwires to the soft goods to the instruction. And so your team is able to take a lot on and do it very well, and we appreciate that. And it's a great comprehensive presentation. Do we have questions from board members?
I had a quick question. Going back to one of the earlier slides about the areas of focus and the Promethean boards. I see you talked about that that is on the, was used from, you know, this year, 2425, and it will be Promethean boards around 2526. Just curious, is it a goal of ours to have a Promethean board in every classroom?
Yes.
And if so, how far along are we percentage-wise of, in the current classroom?
So I would say this year alone, we were fortunate to install around like 20, 25 boards district-wide. We were able to outfit a lot in our elementary schools. We're going to continue that work over the summer to outfit Osborne and Midland. A lot of it is based on need and then also is just strategic planning in terms of rooms that we can access and put up that may not need some facilities work that Rob needs to do on his end first before we would put the boards up. So it's all kind of a big puzzle piece that we're working towards. I would say we have several more years until we would hit district-wide. Alone in the high school, we have probably over 200 spaces that need to be covered. And so it's something that we're constantly working towards. But again, we're not just putting boards up for the sake of putting them up in classrooms. Every classroom is really looked at with a fine scope of what the need is. From the facility side of it, from the instruct, from the technology side of it. And then we put a plan in place to do the implementation. So we will have several years out, but the feedback that I'm getting from teachers that have them is it's a great experience. Teachers that don't have them are still working towards getting trained, so they're up to speed when it comes. And as we integrate new tech, the new technology, we're always communicating with our building administrators and our staff to say next year, these are the classrooms that are going to get them. So we have a nice spreadsheet that we use to kind of keep everyone up to date with what's happening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Actually, in that, oh goodness, sorry, thank you. In that same vein, I mean, we've been, we've been outfitting the district with flexible furniture for several years. I don't know when we started, it was early, it was before 2020. How, where are we in terms of capacity for that? Like, are we halfway there?
We're very close in our elementary schools.
Yeah.
So what I'm really excited to see is again, from the support of the POs and the district budget, able to do that, these initiatives. We've been strategic in terms of grade levels, but majority, I would say, by the time we open next school year, we're very close to almost being done across the three elementary schools, which is really great to see. Middle school is also taking a big leap from their PO this year, which is great support. And we are outfitting 11 more classrooms. So that's a lot of work that we've been doing. And Mr. Hare and I have been having conversations about the transition of high school classrooms. And so it's great to partner with him now to think, where are we going to, what are the needs in the building? Where are we going next? And we're just gonna start working with teachers in the fall on that work as well.
Okay. Can I ask, it may seem really random and nitpicky, and I apologize. When we're talking about the flexible spaces, right, in the classrooms, and so you were talking about that instructional materials will now actually be more of a shared idea. What then happens to, and this is the common complaint that we get from parents in September and August, I've got this materials list and says I need 700 boxes of tissues and 25 boxes of pencils and 57 erasers. Will there be in those classrooms where now materials are going to be thought about a little bit differently, an actual like hearty review of those forms that always come to the families that say, I need 37 composition books? Like, I think that's a great opportunity for our staff to reevaluate the, the material needs.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
It's part of the process when we work through it, teachers, is reevaluating what you need. And it doesn't always happen in the first year because teachers have a hard time giving up some of the practices they've had. But they realize very quickly that they need to shift their thinking and what they order and what they have. And, and it does become much more efficient. So that is a process and that's one, before PO send out those lists, they go to the teachers and talk with them and meet with them. And that will be something that looks different for many classrooms.
Just from a storage capacity, like when we're working with teachers on this design, we'll talk about like, what, does your current, current storage look like in your classroom now? And what are we moving towards and what does that mean in terms of purging things out of your classroom, getting rid of some stuff? And so it's all the exercise that we do as we build this design so that they know when the furniture is going to be installed and delivered in July, these are the things that I have to prep for in preparation for that coming because my classroom is going to function or look differently.
When we find the gallons of dried up tempera paint all the way in the back, I mean, those are the, those are great opportunities to talk through, what do you need?
Right.
What has just been on the list because it was always on the list? Let's rethink this. And, and that is part of the process.
I'm very excited for that. Can I ask a couple of questions about the AI strategic plan?
Sure.
So first of all, I think it's fantastic, all of the work that has been put into this very emerging technology that I won't even begin to think I understand at all. I've ventured into chat GPT world a little bit, but not a lot. But at the same time, I know that that, this is something that is, you know, makes probably a headline every single day or more than once a day in, in the world around us. And so I was just curious, so the, the strategic plan, help me understand, like, who's involved in that? Like, how wide of a, a, a scope is it in terms of the people that you're kind of bringing together to contribute to it?
So right now, Dr. Murray and I have been planning this.
So maybe a little bigger.
It will be a little bigger. Right now, it's, it's really looking at the guidelines we put in place. And it's just harnessing all of the work that we've already done. As I said, like, we've been keeping our own internal AI documentation to show every time we've had a professional learning course or work that we've done around it, we've been housing it in our own documents, if we will. So we wanted to start to put together a draft so that a larger group that will eventually put eyes on this can actually see all the work that has been done and not thinking we're starting from scratch, right? Sometimes when you say strategic plan, think, people think we're starting from the ground up to say, what are your goals? What are your objectives? What are your timelines? We already have a lot of those things answered.
Right.
And especially with the new guidelines now in place for us to help guide that thinking. So we're starting our strategic plan of just mapping it out. And then we'll bring in, I'm sure, our professional development team and other individuals to help us refine that work. But we just wanted to start with mapping it out for everyone, so it doesn't look like we're just saying, AI is here, what should we do? Because we've already had those conversations.
For sure, definitely. And it was so helpful to have those guidelines to talk about at our last meeting. And I was just curious if it was something, you know, when I think about different areas where we've done, you know, development for literacy or for math changes or things along those lines, if it would be that kind of a scope of people that you would want to bring together, which would include,
Absolutely.
you know, parents, community members, others outside of the professional development side, which is super important because the teachers need to know how to, to, to present this and how to understand it so that the students can then understand it, but.
Our, our plan would be also to take it to the technology committee.
Right.
Where you have the group of people that created the guidelines. And so you want kind of, we're going to be designing it so it's a multi-year. So things that we have done, we will do next year and in the following few years so we can be fully integrated with AI. It'll take some time because there's so much professional learning that has to happen.
Right.
And, and learning for, on the student end as well.
Right. And, and I would hope the parent end, like, maybe there'll be some parent universities on that, so they understand. I mean, even just presenting, like, making sure people are aware what, what are thinking about the guidelines are.
So we do have a parent university scheduled the end of April.
Right. You said that last time, yes, yeah.
And we'll continue to do those as well.
Okay.
It's a very comprehensive and thoughtful plan. Thank you for, for sharing it. I guess one high-level question and one clarifying question. And I know that sort of goes to what was making Jane's head hurt earlier. But just as you think about, I guess, the, the phasing of rolling these, you know, Salto locks and Promethean boards out, you know, I understand the logic, like, particularly for Promethean boards to want to have, you know, 100% in all classrooms, but then, you know, these, these upgrade cycles of then having to replace every single one. I guess, could you sort of talk about how you think about phasing, you know, so that we can, you know, manage an upgrade cycle more effectively?
Yeah.
And also just maybe on the backward compatibility of a lot of the, the systems that we have in place. And, and I don't know the Salto plus versus Salto regular, but just, just as.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll start with Promethean side of it. So one of the things different from the smart boards that we have from the boards is just their lifespan in general is, is a longer lifespan than what we've seen, which is really helpful. And one of the reasons we picked this product over the numerous products that are on the market right now is the compatibility and growth that it lends itself. So Promethean is not just proprietary to their software. It integrates with everything else that could be new and coming out, which is a feature that we really loved. So sometimes when you go to boards, like a new line or something else, it's proprietary to only that system. So you're almost stuck with this package deal of this is what you have. When we integrate the TVs into the classrooms, you can either use it, like, we call it two sides. We call it the Rye side and we call it the Promethean side. So I could put a board in a teacher's room tomorrow, aside from having a large screen, they could still function the way that they were because they have everything that we offer, just only more tools that advance. So when Promethean comes out with software upgrades, we have to do the professional learning around it, but they're still able to fully function. It's not just this is proprietary to what they need. So that's been really helpful. That was decided at the technology committee a couple of years ago that teachers didn't want to be pigeonholed into one system and one platform. Every teacher teaches differently. They need different softwares and different tools. You're a world language teacher, you're a science teacher, everyone's classrooms look different. So this gives the most flexibility for us in regards to replacement cycle right now. So we're doing it in terms of needs of boards that are failing immediately that need to be replaced. And then also just systematically what we could replace in a building. One of the things I'm fortunate about it, that this will be phased over certain years is because replacing everything in one shot is never good anyway, right? Because we wouldn't have the budget to do that if all boards failed at the same time. So right now, we'd get about 10 years out of the boards. And so building in our inventories and our spreadsheets, our checkpoints of when a board was installed to know when the turnaround time would be approximate for when we'd have to replace that classroom is something that we all keep internal in terms of our documentation to know when that cycle is up.
And then just, just specific, sorry, for the, for the budget specifically. So, you know, I see the, the line items for software and durables have gone up, you know, quite, quite a lot. Contractual has come down. I guess, could you just walk us through those changes and then specifically within software? How much of that increase is just our existing contracts that, you know, prices have gone up versus, you know, additional offerings?
So I'll start with software first. So we've seen a significant jump in software. And just to highlight the number that you're seeing where in this budget line does encompass software for district-wide things. So it's not just instructional technology software, it's software for the business office, for facilities. It's encompassing of all, which is great just to help us in terms of keeping track of what we have access to across the district. In the past, we've, I've budgeted for software very differently. Now I'm budgeting, last year it was at a 10% increase, this year it's at 12% increase. And that's even with the technology committee. Last year, their focus on the committee was to go through, at least from an instructional standpoint, all the software we had access to, we looked at usage, we looked at benefits in the classroom, and we actually got rid of some softwares. But now we're actually gaining because of all the AI tools that are out there. We've put some more back into the budget and they are quite expensive. We are trying to be very systematic and thoughtful when we're picking software. So I'll just go back to AI being an example, there's 100 tools out there that we could subscribe to. And so we're working with teachers, we're working with our committee to say, what's our need? What's more, like more beneficial than another and really doing an evaluation on something before we just purchase it? We don't need 500 tools, we need a few that do some really good work around that topic. And so evaluation for us is always important, but software just keeps increasing. So right now, this year, I'm at a 12% increase for each line. And that's not to say that it may even be more than that when we get the actual renewals in July. So it definitely has been increasing significantly in regards to the durable materials. So that's where you're going to see a lot of the replacement cycles, as we talked about, our desktops, our mobile technology. Those are all site replacement cycles that have come up. And again, just hardware in general has also been increased significantly over the last couple of years.
And it's just, sorry, for contractual, that was all of the work earlier last year, just with all of the cabling? And that cost has come, because we did it, okay?
Correct.
All right, anyone else? Well, Dr. Sassone, as you saw me rubbing my head, you have a lot to stay ahead of. And I know that the department works really hard on ensuring that you're not only staying ahead, but you're thinking ahead and you're current and you're constantly working. And it is greatly appreciated and it is seen and we thank you and your department for all of that work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now we will move on to our presentation of athletics and that's Ms. Susan Reed Dulay, Ms. Dulay.
I always say when I follow Caitlin, I feel very boring in my budget. It's very interesting to hear all the, the information she always provides. And I, I thought about it, the Promethean boards, you said a 10-year cycle replacement, all I could think of was helmets. 10-year cycle replacement. So we don't like that word, but we're doing good with helmets, so I'm not here about that. So again, as many of us, we start with our Rye commitment. It's nice in my fifth year to always refer back to this and, and think about everything we do on a daily basis, not just here for the budget, right, to, to give this presentation. And when I think about our students, I feel so grateful to be driven daily by them, to think outside of the box. In my world of athletics, you can certainly get bogged down with the minutia of storing uniforms or, you know, doing softball field tours or different things that are just unique to the day. So when students come in to celebrate or need some support, it's, it's a reminder on a daily basis why I feel so fortunate to be a part of this community and our students specifically. And that's just not obviously athletes in my world, that's all of our students I feel so grateful to be a part of. In our community, I often, I always strongly feel supported, whether it's showing up to an event and seeing a plethora of people that don't even have children playing or alumni that show up just to support and to be there for our kids and our coaches and our staff, of course. I think about, Callie was at the PO meeting the other day in the middle school and how proactive our community is about bringing communication and how we can be better at what we do. Again, pushing us to, to be committed to our community and to our students. And then obviously with our staff, administration, faculty, I feel strongly that we are, all of us are a part of a team. I was, you know, lucky to work with Ms. Donna Sorkin, who recently retired as my administrative assistant. So for a few months, we challenged through that battle. And in that challenge, being a part of this team, I don't think I could have, you know, landed where I am today without different people that, you know, stepped up in that role. Specifically, I think about the business office, Kathy, Gabby, Nancy and Patty especially, who were making sure that we pay our bills on time and supporting me on those, those simple things that, you know, someone else had done. And when you take a piece of that team away, often you think something's going to slack and that didn't happen. Our custodial staff, which is continuously transitioning, that step up day in, day out for my neediness when something goes wrong. And it might not seem urgent at the time, but they always make it a priority. I think about facilities like that quite a bit. Our health services team, we recently received a wonderful new athletic trainer. But that's new and that's changed in the middle of a season. And all of those things don't happen without overall a commitment to this community. And I feel so grateful to be a part of it. So when I get to come to do the budget piece, again, like while I joked about ordering soccer balls and all those things, they are all a big part of this. And so operating standards are diverse and more global than people think in the world of athletics. Specifically, like you look at something there, like supporting the physical and mental health of students, which is something I'll talk a little bit further about. There is continuing research, especially related surrounding athletics. It's constantly in the news about student mental health and the pressure surrounding athletics. So, you know, we continue to look at these operating standards and again, driving not just what we do on a daily basis, but how our budget affects these and what we need to assess in our daily standards, our operating standards to make our community and our students successful. So to highlight a few, I just wanted to reach, this is an important piece that we continue to look at. I highlighted the Rye Youth Council because they have been working with our teachers and coaches. Specifically, the beginning, excuse me, of seasons primarily, doing some different work with deep breathing, mindfulness, just to work on some of the strategies that they could use throughout, not just the sport, but how they can support one another as a team. Many of our coaches do team building sessions. Recently, I just booked the NPR for eight sessions for coaches to do some work with a particular team. This winter, I had a team do a book study on what it meant to be a good teammate, The Hard Hat by John Gordon. So they're thinking outside of the box, which I love for our coaches and our staff to be continuously thinking about how they can serve our students better. This was new and this was driven, the end of season survey was driven originally from action research that we're doing as administrative team. So I put out my first. So I put out my first survey at the end of fall. Uh, I would like to have higher numbers of our students take the survey, but as you can imagine, I'm sure there was some angst when you look at a survey that asks some questions that go into deeper understanding. Um, I brought my survey with me, so I just wanted to share a couple of questions so you could see what we're looking at. Um, a couple of examples that I used, uh, with, that are on here with the kids. Whoops, make sure I get it in here. Uh, what was the most challenging part of your season? Do you feel you improved as an athlete this season? If yes, when, what areas? How, how would you describe the overall team atmosphere this season? Do you feel that your teammates supported and encouraged you? Why or why not? What could be improved to make the team environment better next season? Do you feel coaches provided constructive feedback? Why or why not? Those are just a few examples. And when I put this out to the students, um, they can put their name and information or they can be anonymous. I'm not collecting emails, so I can't see where they're coming from. The end goal is to take the information after the fall, winter and spring and put it together, so to speak, to share with our coaching staff to hopefully drive their instruction as they get feedback from our students. So it's not being used as a punitive or evaluative tool, but it's just to get feedback from kids to share with the adults that are supervising them and how they can improve, um, their culture of their programs. I also will be doing a, um, senior kind of exit ticket, if you will, that again, these are all optional for our students that sometimes they feel a little more comfortable when they're exiting the, the district to, uh, give us feedback. So I'm really looking forward to that and hopefully in my winter season, a survey that's coming up tomorrow, I will get just more and more, um, you know, students that will feel comfortable to take this. I hope that they will and encourage them to do so. Um, so we'll see.
Quick question, is that for JV and varsity?
Yep.
And does the survey come from you or from their coach?
Comes from me.
Okay.
Um, I don't want to write at this point, like my action research hasn't driven me toward the, the coaches, uh, releasing that yet, but that might come out, you know, with, as we go through it to see, you know, maybe it could improve if it came from the coach. On the other hand, I'm not sure. We'll have to see what they, what things say.
Great. Uh, yeah, go ahead, Jean. Just to follow up on that, how are this, how are you communicating with the student athletes? The purpose or the, the reason for the request for the information?
So I'm, I've done a couple of things. I started with just an email and it goes to the students only. Um, and in my body of my email, I explain what I'm, what my purpose is, that I'm looking for feedback from them, that it may be anonymous and why, and that, um, looking at this feedback is something that I'm looking to support the culture of the athletic department. One of the questions, the last questions is, do you feel the athletic directors value student athletes and wellbeing? I'm also looking for personal reflection. What could the athletic director do better to support student athletes? I'm hopeful to get feedback from that again, so I can change or support the needs of our students. Thank you for, um, emergent action, emergency action planning. I always put this up here because I, I want our families to understand that while we have many different sites, we are prepared, that if something should go wrong after three o'clock, that we are cognizant of this, that we want our students and our coaches to be prepared should something unfortunate happen. It could be something just minor, is a minor injury that students and the team, um, practice and work within these systems. And again, in collaboration with health services, uh, working with Gabby and Tracy Barnett and specifically our athletic trainer with our coaches, our student athletes and how we can be proactive, um, as we move forward with our systems. And then secondly, creating a fiscal responsible budget that provides long-term, for, long-term financial stability, um, constantly looking at sustainability and what we put into play when Rob talks about facilities planning. Rob, Gabby and I, um, have met many a time to go over what our scope and sequence, our pie in the sky dreams were, uh, for facilities specifically and how we get there, um, organizationally, but also how do we sustain them? And while it's not in my budget, you will see some of the things I highlight, that the community was so generous on our override last year that we were benefiting from with athletics. Um, facilities planning and Gabby putting together things like fields and maintenance on those, so we sustain them, that we don't just do a project and oh, it looks beautiful. But then five years down the line, we're back here saying, you know, the field is a mess. We, we don't want that. Obviously we want to be thoughtful with that. Um, maintaining facilities and athletic programs within our proposed budget always. So, um, you'll see the, the dates always look a little strange, right? Because I have the fall, um, participation numbers, the winter of, and then the spring from the last spring, because we're on the cusp. Uh, VRC and JV started last Monday, the 17th, and modified to getting ready to start. So you'll see our numbers overall, um, pretty, pretty much stay consistent. Some programs spike often than others and I think it's just sometimes an interest in the culture of the student athlete. But overall we have a large participation. We have many student athletes. I don't have the data in front of me, but statistically speaking, our, we have many student athletes that are two and three sport athletes, um, in our district, which is nice to see. Um, cost per pupil, as you recall, I do this on an average basis. So this is over a five-year period, looking at grade seven through 12. I won't go through each line item, you can clearly see that. You'll see how it's broken down roughly. Uh, transportation continues to increase, especially as we get successful. So you'll see those will fluctuate on an average. Um, the cost per pupil is based upon materials that are ordered. So something I always highlight, something like swimming is $11,000, but that, because that is a rental, um, for example, with Mamaroneck School District. So it's not like we're spending, you know, $8,000 on equipment per se, but, um, with the facility itself. So things like that will look a little high sometimes, but, um, that's something to factor in as well. Our coaching stipends are listed and those are the number of coaches that are allotted per spore at this time. Transportation again, and it's broken down to a cost per pupil. This does not include anything that was part of, uh, for example, when we get into, let's say like, uh, when we get into wrestling in the winter, there's nothing in there with the wrestling room. That was a separate item with facilities and our transfer to capital with the override. Um, so when you look at these things, they also don't include any donations that a particular group goes to. So football, often every year the RFA donates money to the district, as you know, um, that you accept that they purchase jerseys for the student athletes with their names on the back. We are not keeping those. That's a donation and that's not listed here. So anything like that goes through the OT fund, you see it before we order it even. So.
Uh, sorry, um, just as transportation is listed here, how has the experience of transportation been for these most current seasons, knowing that last year it was a bit tricky?
So it's getting better. So that's a plus, right? So positive, our, uh, fall was, was a little shaky in different times, but it flattened out. Winter, I can honestly say maybe just one or two times where we had an issue with transportation. So we're able to, we started our games a little later to help accommodate some of these things, especially we have other school districts that are going through it that get out later, can't get a bus till later. So we, of course, will accommodate that as well. So it's good and better. I'm keeping my fingers crossed through spring, as I just did the Google forms for transportation this week, um, that they will not have to use them hopefully. But again, we would not, I just think back the last few years with the community we have and the families we have and what we're able to do. There are many districts that could not do what we've done and, and our kids would be without. So I'm again, very thankful for that. We're getting better. And here's your winter breakdown. You'll see, um, again, this is an average between 20 and 20, 20 to 2025. Um, participation wise, again, the columns are pretty specific. You know, ice hockey is large, remember, because of rental? And again, that's not a donation, that's the school component listed there. Uh, wrestling is not the room itself, as I mentioned, it's, it's supplies and anything that the wrestling, um, program would need. For example, like entry fees are in there for tournaments, which is part of indoor track and outdoor track and bless you. So I just think it's important, this is something like, kids will come in and will chat about things and they'll have questions and sometimes I find myself bringing this up because I think it's important for them to understand, sometimes there's a lot of perception and I understand that and that's not going to change, but these are things that are concrete and that we're reflective on as we do our budget to make sure we are being equitable to the best of our abilities with the needs of the specific sport and the population. And then lastly, our third season, uh, again, you'll see it's to 2024 because we have not completed our 2025 season in spring. You'll see our participation numbers remain constant overall and average. Again, materials, coaching, transportation and cost per pupil, uh, flattens out. Again, when you see transportation at a little bit higher, you'll see over time, um, it'll go up with her success. So, whoops, that's hard to see. Um, budget drivers, um, you'll see there's some increases in supplies. That's just a natural, you know, Caitlin alluded to a percentage increase, um, just as costs, like something as simple as baseballs recently went up a few dollars a baseball because of a NFHS stamp that went on it. So something like that you just can plan for. So while I'm not just throwing $5,000 on supplies, I know things are going up, so, but I want to be responsible and not obviously overdo it. Um, the BOSI services, that's your officials fees come from that, your office fees, your software fees like Huddle, our family ID registration, Local Live. Um, I also put in Local Live for next year for our softball field that's being done. So that's also in there as an increase. Um, so that is, is sometimes hard to, to just, um, to adjust. A lot of the, a lot of those things are, are set, but officials fees depend on how successful you are. If you go further, you're obviously paying for more officials. Uh, next up is the postseason travel. We added an additional 10,000. And two years ago, when we had a lot of success, uh, we have a budget line item for this that sits at $10,000 and we hit close to 20 with that, with our success. Now pieces of that come back from our section in our state. It's not dollar for dollar. It's usually a percentage of your mileage, a percentage of meals, your hotels, things depending on the sport. So when Gabby and I started planning this, we wanted to plan for best case slash worst case scenarios, so we wouldn't have to take, um, money from, you know, other areas of the budget that we were being upfront with that money. And obviously that wouldn't be used unless we're successful, but, um, that it's in there should we need it. So right now, for example, as we head into spring, I think I'm about $6,000 right now available in that budget code out of 10. Um, so as we head into spring, as those teams get successful, that's where that money comes from to utilize that. And if we are successful, we could go over and that's not something we want to do. So that's why that's in there. Um, yeah, sorry.
Good news for kids and the good news for student athletes, not so great for our financial bottom line.
But I do love that we have it because I will tell you this, a lot of districts don't have that line item. And then when something happens, they're going to the business official with this, saying, you know, where are we getting this money? And, you know, uh, that's a great question, but I think this, when I got to Rye was here, I was like, this is great because we can plan and, and we can talk about the individual sports. We have our coaches that go to wrestling and swimming and when they go, we want to make sure that they're able to go and they're not on their dime because they've, they're supervising our kids and are there for them. Um, rental and contractual, this is a little bit higher because over the last few years I've seen this area where I've, I've looked at it and we've, um, almost zeroed out of this or went deeper because of increases in cost of our rental and contractual, um, fees, so to speak. And within this too, um, we've had some success with a couple of programs. I'm looking, thinking of wrestling and skiing, for example. And as skiing adjusts, we start out with a great idea that winter is going to be perfect for skiing and Thunder Ridge is the place we go and then Thunder Ridge shuts down and then you have to find other places to go so our students could ski. So we are moving, um, to different places and it's hard to budget for that because we don't know necessarily a mountain's fee, like what we're supposed to be at, uh, say Thunder Ridge. So that's something that I've continued to see increase and I don't want to have to come back to the board for a transfer of funds into that area. Um, and it's something that, you know, to just be cognizant of over my time assessing, that's where we needed to be. And the entry fees again, as we, wrestling, indoor track, outdoor track, cheerleading, um, the, uh, entry fees into tournaments, I feel like we're getting close. I think I have with the spring about 2,000 left in that entry fee code. So we're getting close to that and we still have a few things looming and I don't want to zero out at that or go over. So, um, it just over time I've seen the increase necessary. And it's our great unified basketball team. From last year, because I'm excited to take our new picture, I'll, I'll be sure to share with the board when we do our, um, our pep rally and all-inclusive day with our student athletes. We have about 30, um, students total between our athletes and partners this year. So we've doubled in size. I'm psyched. So this is not part of my budget, but last year when I came to do my budget, I, I looked at my slides and in that was the discussion of what if? And thankfully our community came out and supported our override and voila, here is the lovely wrestling room up top, which I think Dean O'Gar told me was here when he started teaching. Um, and again, this is about sustainability, right? So we put this beautiful wrestling room in with mats and beautiful padding, but what Rob and Gabby and everyone planned on the backside, which doesn't look necessarily in that picture, is the, uh, air systems, the painting, the lighting, all of those things that went into that make this a beautiful facility. And so I thought it was nice to, to show the fruition of this because, um, you know, our kids were really proud to be in this environment and to practice there. And you'll see, uh, besides that, we have completed the wrestling room. Um, we did the painting and the lighting in the gym and the second half of the gymnasium will be over the summer, which we, Rob, I'm sure will talk about or have, maybe have some information on. So I'm not going to steal his thunder, but, um, I love the poster by the gym that talks about this. Um, we are looking at our wood floor, our bleachers, our banner system and really excited to redo the gym and brighten it up. And then, uh, again, not a, a athletic budget, but again, an upgrade that's part of Rob's, um, piece, I'm sure. We walked it today. I'm excited for this. Um, the softball field with the intentions, uh, of opening and bringing our young ladies onto a field that they can be proud of daily. Put a lot of work in, Rob and Gabby and obviously Eric, when we started first discussions with this and where it will end, I'm really excited to see it. And obviously we continue to do those maintenance works at Milton and I thought it was important to put that in there too, because right now that's where our teams are practicing while this field is being, um, finished. Um, and you can see obviously what's being done there, so I don't want to steal your thunder. So here is the athletic budget over time. You'll see there are some reductions. I did highlight some of those budget drivers where you see there was an increase, um, for those specific reasons. But if anyone has any specific questions about anything, um, or the specific line items, I can clearly, um, obviously share with you any answers hopefully.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Um, you mentioned it in the very beginning, but I think it's worth mentioning again that it, there was a period of time where your office went through a significant transition and it was really, um, unknown because the operations continued. And to, to, it's great to hear that once again, it's a result of the offices working together across the district to, to support one another. And so that you could lose an athletic trainer and you can lose your office support staff and yet there would be no known impact to the community. And so I think all of those who, who worked to make that happen, because it's really important and it's great to see the camaraderie and the collegiality and then the benefit to the community as a result. So thank you for that.
I'm very lucky.
I just, um, had a question about the facility upgrades.
Yes.
Um, I appreciate the pictures. I've been in the wrestling room. It does look amazing, um, and, um, and as well as the softball fields. Just curious, are there any facility upgrades on the horizon? I know we were able to, to pay for these through last year through the transfer to capital, um, which we had the override. And I know next year, I don't think there are any. Are there any other upgrades on the, in the future and do we continue to look at facility upgrades, master plan and seeing, you know, where we can, there are some other spaces that need attention, as you well know. So where do we stand with kind of looking in the future for facility upgrades?
So nothing specifically in my budget for next year specifically, but we did have a master a master plan. So to speak of scope and sequence, I know we often like to use of prioritizing. So as we go through that, I feel like when Caitlin talked about her spreadsheet and checklist of where we're at, we have to be mindful of that. So there will be something forthcoming, I'm sure, as we start doing that because if we don't, then we're going to end up, as we said, not sustaining those facilities. So it's not something that I could tell you what's next on the list, but we did prioritize for many reasons of how we did that. Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, there is a portion in my presentation that does touch upon some of the, some of the transfer to capital projects.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Another good teammate. That's right. I love it. No department is in isolation, right? All of these pieces are working together constantly and integrating and it's the intentionality that we've talked about a lot about being able to do that that makes all of these things so successful. Any other questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. I appreciate it.
And last but never least, we have our facilities presentation and Mr. Kimigliano, you're up.
Again, thank you for staying here for a late evening and giving me the opportunity to present this budget for the 25-26 school year. So it all begins with the Ry commitment very broadly. It's a commitment to students, faculty, and staff as well as the community. And how do we do that? I walked into a culture of service and it's just continuing to build on that, that culture. We're making ourselves available as a department. And again, it's not, it's, it's a department that I have the, the privilege of leading. There's nearly 30 members between cleaners, custodians, our courier, our maintenance staff, including our office staff who has been patiently sitting here the whole evening. Suzie lives in this budget. You know, I'm presenting these line items very, you know, you're looking at an entire year expenditure, but she's looking at every single invoice and managing that budget throughout the year. So a special thank you for Suzie and coming tonight. Any entire department, again, it's a, it's a team effort amongst departments, but within the department, it's that culture of service. There's countless examples that I have throughout the year. I try to make sure that we make ourselves available, not just me, but the head custodians in the building and, you know, neighbors that are adjacent to a construction site. I make myself, make myself available. When we're cutting down a tree, I dropped off a, dropped off letters, kind of letting them know. And that communication goes both ways. Recently, there was a tree we took down and the neighbor actually read the letter, called me and sent me a letter so that it all went, it all went well, which was, you know, it was really great to hear that it wasn't an issue that needed to be handled, but they followed up and, and I, it's great having that two-way communication. There's a lot of initiatives that throughout the year that we work with students that approach me on a litter cleanup project or upgrades to a courtyard with the PTOs or playground initiatives. These are all, these are all enthusiastic groups and it's, it's very motivating to be part of that and work with them. And ultimately, it delivers a product that fulfills the commitment to students and staff and the community. So any operating standards focusing on the, the safe, secure, and healthy environments, it, it begins by providing a clean facility. So that ultimately, there's a lot of big projects, there's a lot of initiatives that athletics and technology are working with. But ultimately, on a day-to-day basis, it's our custodians that are here till 11 o'clock at night, making sure that building's reset and having it, having the facility cleaned for the next day. So utilization of resources and personnel, that's a little sticker of a head custodian meeting that we had. So that's all the head custodians, myself and Suzie, that, that, we, we try to gather at least twice a month on a routine basis and we discuss issues that we're all having in our buildings and sharing resources, what's working, what's not working, you know, down to the detail of, you know, the quality of the hand paper towel and how it's dispensing if you're seeing issues with the tearing or, so we've, we've taken some of that information and made some changes that they're economically effective, but ultimately save us work effort or just deliver something a little bit better in terms of hand soap or drying out your skin, you know, taking feedback from faculty through our work order system, taking all that information. But there really, there really is a value gathering as a group and sharing that and building that teamwork. So another operating standard here, building a fiscally responsible budget. That icon there is actually a spreadsheet. It's a screenshot of a spreadsheet that gathers data that we input every time there's a utility bill. The bill comes in and we, we use it to track and look at trends and we could create graphs and particularly with the utilities and you'll see in other slides as I go forward. It just gives us indication if these are, if these are just market trends in the commodity itself, where there's actually usage that we need to, we need to dig into, like a water leak that could be underground and we're seeing spikes in usage. So there was a lot of hype around these icons, but these are more meaningful. They weren't as flashy as the spinning wifi.
I think they're fantastic. They, they are worth staying late for. And now, next year's icons, just so you know. You've laid the standard and I hope everybody hears. Well, but there's next year, so there's always another time.
So here is information that I have shared in the past. This is just a general overview of the, the amount of square footage we cover and maintain. Buildings rarely grow, but in this case, Osborne and Midland, by the end of the summer, they, they are going to grow by nearly 8,000 square feet. So that, that has to be taken into account for our budgeting. There's, you know, difference in utility usage, time commitment to be able to clean it, future maintenance. So all that is considered when, when we develop the budget. So a vast majority of the facility budget is utility and that's gas, fuel, oil, water, and electricity. So I, just as, I tried to pick a few buildings that are a bellwether for utility usage and I think the, the graph on the left is natural gas usage at Osborne and fuel oil at Midland on the same graph. So it's just interesting to look at these trends. The third column from the, from the right, and it was a warmer year, '21-'22, so you could see a decrease in fuel usage, although there was a spike in cost for oil because that was a year when oil nearly doubled. So you could see that we're, we're not just at the mercy of weather, it's also, there's also market pressures that we have to take into account. So, but.
Would you say, Rob, for the 20, I'm not going to read it, '22-'23 for the natural gas, that that was, that was a market spike? Or did we add?
So the last two years, we've, we've experienced over 20% increases in some of these utilities.
Because that's, I mean, it's a, it's a significant difference from even the past years where it was up.
Right. So we're looking at actual expenditure, so these are dollars.
Yes.
But again, utilities are, it's also weather, it's also weather dependent. So '21-'22, when you look at total heating degree days, it was far less than '22-'23. So there's increased usage and that increased usage is also a higher rate. But, but you see oil dipping, although we may have used less, it was actually nearly, the cost went from $6.80 a gallon to like $3.80 a gallon. So it was a significant difference. It's, it's far more volatile than other utilities or other fuel sources. And we see the same at Milton with electricity costs. So there, you could see there, the expenditure has increased in the last two years quite significantly. And that is a building that there hasn't been much change, so they're adjusting for some differences in, you know, temperature or, you know, cooling demand from year to year. There, there's still a significant difference, cost increase that is going to continue in So some of the other big drivers in our budget, it's really focused on maintaining, repairing, and continual investment in our assets, right? So how do we do that? We do that with a lot of contracted services and in addition to everything that we could do in-house and the routine maintenance, the, there are things that we need to bring in the experts for. A lot of the HVAC equipment, newly installed HVAC equipment, as well as some of the older one, all the refrigerant side, a lot of the, the communication software in there that's proprietary and we just need to make sure that we're optimizing energy. The routine, the routine maintenance inspection of life safety equipment, elevators, alarm systems that, that all, many of that has required inspections and keeping up with the market rates and, and maintenance schedules is critical to maintaining this equipment is all included in this contract services line. There is, this year, there's two major, two major expenditures in the architectural engineering line and that is a building condition survey. That is a Office of Facility Planning requirement that is every five years that we do a building condition survey. So this is a, it's formalizing, it's formalizing what I think we do consistently every single year. We're constantly maintaining or evaluating our facilities, seeing where, where there's issues, but filing that report, there is, we have to bring in professionals for that. So there is some costs that is captured in the budget as well as a triennial, triennial report, which is, that's for asbestos reporting. It's a very comprehensive survey of all materials in, in district buildings that visible, behind the scenes, mechanical rooms. So that's every three years. So I guess every 15 years, there's an overlap in these two, two major reporting requirements. So again, that's captured in here. So in addition to some of the, the increases, I did want to highlight that, you know, we as a department, look at the budget line by line and things that can be reduced are reduced. We've had the, we have been fortunate enough, in the last couple of budget years, we were able to replace some vehicles and this, we are in a good place for the moment. We're continuing to maintain, to maintain some of the older vehicles, but we're, we're able to take a one-year pause on, on some of that equipment replacement, but still be in a good place to have plow vehicles ready for, ready for a snowstorm. So again, there, some of the other reductions, we'll, we'll see when we actually get to the, to the line items. It's adjusting some of the, some of the specific lines. We do have a fairly new maintenance department that it's been about two years. So supporting, supporting those staff members with the correct supplies and durable goods is something that we're, we're evaluating and it really, it's these dollar amount thresholds in the classification in the budget. So just, just looking at it and moving things around to accurately reflect what we're spending on. So the durable goods, which is an item over 500, it actually is not routinely, it, it's more items that are less than that for routines that we're, for repairs that we're routinely doing. So again, it's just evaluating it and just trying to be very accurate in how we, how we present the budget requests. So this is always the best part. These are, these are photos of, of work, of the transfer to capital projects that were supported in last year's budget. Just to show you, the, as a commitment to the community who supports the budget, we hit the ground running. There's, there's always pre-planning and anticipation. So after the budget is actually passed, we could, we could begin to, to implement some of these changes. So in the last year, from the, from the last budget, we, we actually achieved many of the items that we could logistically. And starting in the upper left corner, that is a softball field that is a picture that's about a week old. If I was presenting this budget in another week and a half, that photo would have been a lot better. There, there, we'd see some green in the outfield and it would look nearly complete, but I guess we do have the advantage, the next time I present the capital update or facilities budget, I'll have a really nice photo of the softball field. But all that planning, the engineering, the approval, the, all the behind the scenes work prior to starting, the, the physical work was, was weeks and months of planning in advance and the moment we were able to get the green light from the community, we hit the ground running and, and that is a project that will, is going to benefit the, the program for many years to come. On the upper right, there's two photos there. That's a curtain wall that was supported through the transfer to capital budget. There, the, you could see the work in progress and the completed, the completed curtain wall on the right-hand side there. We did that in conjunction with the, the larger capital project that was underway. It was not included in the, the original planning from 2018, 2019. Things got, things obviously deteriorate even in a five-year span, but when some of it was not visible, they were behind old heating cabinets. When we removed them, we realized that we did, we did have to take action on this. It really was the most economical time to do it and, and logistically, it was already ripped up. So fortunately, we did have that, that, that request and that, that fund to lean on and it, we were able to complete the I-Lab with that exterior portion that was not originally included in the capital project, but ultimately, it, the, the end product is, it's actually stunning. So, and hopefully, we'll be there for decades as well. So Susan also had some great pictures of the wrestling room. That, that is nearly complete. Again, we started last summer with the painting, lighting. Our custodians ripped down the mats. I think it was a couple of days after the budget passed, we were happy to get rid of the, the, I think they would have volunteered for that to get rid of those old pads because they did harbor some odors.
And you got rid of the smell right away, too. That was a big improvement.
Yeah, they, they harbored odors and I think it was quite a ceremony. So, and again, working with those vendors, we, multiple vendors, there was HVAC equipment identified two building condition surveys ago that was still, we were, we were still band-aiding it and it was still functioning, but now really gave us the opportunity to get in there. The place was going to have, you know, surfaces that didn't need to be protected. We knew that there was equipment that was near, was probably past the end of its life according to some of the calculations. But we're, so we have new rooftop unit to service the ventilation there, but on top of that, the, the unit has the minor upgrade of a coil and air conditioning, so it is 2025 standards. so it is 2025 standards. So that'll be well appreciated the next time there's a, there's a wrestling tournament in there. So, the, the other photo there is some of the drainage work that is below the softball field. Significant amount of, of infrastructure that won't be visible ever, but it is protecting the field, protecting the neighbors adjacent to the field. And again, all driven by requirements and the sensitivity of the area and, and drainage and all over Rye. So the last photo on this slide is the, the high school gym. This was taken last summer as we were wrapping up the, that first phase of the paint work. We were hanging the banners back up and that really large donated flag from the Osborne, which found a perfect home, hanging on the, hanging on that wall. It looks like perfectly to scale when, when it's on the wall. So that was, that was, that was fun to hang. Actually, had the privilege of jumping on the lift with our maintenance guys in the summer as we were wrapping up at the last minute, so. So I spent a lot of time talking about transfer to capital, what we did, what was supported last year, what was actually achieved. So Callie, I believe you asked the question related to athletics. There's less of a focus on athletics this year, just based on need. So as we go through the year and we kind of look at failures and where, where there's, there is an immediate need for this year and what, what's actually achievable, this is the preliminary list that we came up with. There's other things that, we know that, again, through our constant evaluation, we keep them in the back of our mind. If something can't be achieved on our initial list, we might fall back on that. But here is, here is three examples of, in the photos of a roof at Osborne that is from 1997. It's one of the oldest roofs. It's one of the leakiest roofs that we have, you know, in, in terms of constantly needing attention. There are skylights that where we would then remove, upgrade the lighting to, to offset that, that natural light that goes in there. But from a maintenance perspective and protecting the building and the insulation up there, it's just a, it's just a smart move. So if we could replace that roof, it'd be one maintenance headache that would be appreciated by our staff and I'm sure the, the building as a whole. So the, on the left, there is photos of the theatrical lighting system from 1975. The, and I know that because there is a, the company out of Long Island that actually services it, they're the only ones that manufacture some of these replacement parts. And they're reaching a point that some of these components are no longer available. So through the transfer capital, there is a portion funded through the budget process here, but there is some, some generous donations to, to also support that through the Rye Fund for Education, as well as the High School and Middle School PTO. So that collaborative effort, actually, you know, from, from all parties, really gets a project like that off the ground. And hopefully, we get a 2025 version of the lighting system. So it definitely doesn't owe us anything. But it's, it certainly gives our theater, theater manager some angst. We've, we've had to decommission one of the panels and, and move some circuits over and, and keep it going, but we're running out of options there. So this, that is coming at a really good time. And again, we, this photo is of a floor that, through the input from, from music teachers in that department, telling me some of their, their needs, working in other buildings, we've put some flooring in Midland, Midland and Osborne in music rooms that have an acoustic, they have an acoustic value with, with this foam backing made for, for these spaces. Performs really well. I've gotten really good feedback. So that's the standard that, that we're going forward in some of those spaces. And looking at a floor that's, that, you know, is failing, and we could also improve the experience for students and the musicians in that room, that would be one of the projects that we have in there. Again, we did speak about it. I don't have a photo of it, of the, the additions coming, but through this transfer to capital, we'll be working with the IT department. When the, when the, the modulators are delivered onsite and bolted together, we're going to get in there and facilitate that, that installation of the cabling, which has a very clearly defined color pattern that works with our PAs, our clocks, and all of our IT infrastructure. And, and controlling that aspect of it may, ensures that it's going to integrate perfectly with the systems that are already in place in the, in the, in the rest of the district. So the second half, also on this list here, the second half of the high school gym is the actual, is a replacement of the actual wood floor. Through our investigations, unfortunately, to, we drill down and take some probing, there is, there's a layer of material that we have to abate prior to doing the floor. So that, that is, that is a significant cost. So we, we're putting in this budget request to, to complete that project. So there's two slides of the actual, of the actual budget lines. This is, there, there's two here because we do separate some of the cost centers of the utilities in each of the locations, which is really helpful for, from our department's perspective for tracking. So again, some of the bigger drivers that I mentioned before is the, are the, the architectural line. So there's some increases there. And utilities across the board, water, gas, oil, we have to, we have to, to budget responsibly, knowing that there, there are some market corrections from the utility companies and, and just the volatility of weather. So in addition, there, the, there's an increased water at the high school, not just in anticipated utility costs, but we anticipate some additional usage with the softball field. So we're putting this really amazing field, and we want to keep it amazing. So we just got to keep that irrigation system running. So we try to anticipate some of those costs based on, based on usage that, that we've tracked it, the Midland Irrigation System, and extrapolated that. And that's included in the budget. You do see a decrease in, in equipment costs there. Like I said, we're, we're able to take, take a one-year pause, knowing that there's, you know, demands throughout the district and balancing need, you know, at the moment and, what we need to, to function. And again, here's just the additional codes. The, the, on this slide here, the facility maintenance athletics. So although the need is driven by, by the field and, and the student athletes here, it does live in my budget because it's part of the physical plant. So there's additional costs here, and we're capturing the, we're capturing the, the maintenance required, not just on the softball field, but we're looking at all athletic fields where we did our evaluation two years ago, knowing that we can, there's, there's things that we can do to just optimize the, the, the playing time in the field. So there is, working actually with the, the city manager, he referred me to a, to an organic, an organic, not a pesticide, but a, but it's a, it's a chemical program for all of the fields. So we've, including that in this budget. We're limiting what we could use. We can't use any, any type of synthetic chemical. So it is, it's a, it's a program to maintain that, to, to optimize the, the natural turf fields, and that is included in this budget as well. So that, that accounts for some of that increase. So those are the, those are the highlights of the budget. If there's any specific questions.
So I do have, first of all, thank you, to all of you. I don't know if I said that out loud for everybody, but one thing we talked about several years ago, and I think it was prior to you getting here, Rob, was an energy performance contract. So just curious, how does that play into looking at some of the utility spikes and things? Like where does that fall in all of that?
So we had anticipated incorporating an energy performance contract as, in advance of the bond. Then we realized that because it was so fluid and we were still trying to figure out where we were going to go with the bond, it would be something that would come at the end. Having said that, when you look at where we are right now environmentally from a financial perspective, and what the low-lying fruit is left in terms of what you need to do in order to generate funding to, because essentially, how it works is it's energy efficiency that then allows you to do other work, savings there that allows you to do other work, right? So it's hard when you look at the spaces that we have left, because a lot of it is putting in sensors, it's changing to LED lights, things that we've done a lot of on our own to then help pay for efficiencies on the HVAC side, which we've also done a lot on our own in terms of controls and putting systems in place. So we are now looking at other options that work similarly to an energy performance contract, but not necessarily having to go out to borrow in order to accomplish the same things. We haven't landed quite yet, but we are exploring a contract with a company called Synergistic that offers other ways of coming up with energy savings, but again, not through borrowing, but through looking at the same systems that I'm talking to about in terms of controls and how they're being turned on and turned off, to see if that's a viable option of going forward where we can then do some additional cost savings. But I do have to say, once, and going into this bond, we standardized the use of controls, ABS controls throughout the district, which means in every building, they act exactly the same. And replacing a lot of the equipment, it's all the same equipment throughout the district. And Rob and his team have done tirelessly amounts of hours of work trying to fine-tune those controls, which, to be perfectly honest, I believe is what a lot of these energy performance contracts would come in and try to do. So I do believe that we're reaping the benefits of a lot of what would have happened had we done that in advance, that we kind of figured out on our own.
Right.
But, but one of the things that, you know, a decision that can be made down the line is having an evaluation done by one of the companies that, that work with districts on energy performance contracts, because they'll come to you and, and look at your campus and look at your facilities and analyze your utility bills and make recommendations and say, we believe that, you know, lighting's always a big one, they're constantly looking at lighting, you've got, you know, 500 lighting units that we think could achieve this kind of savings. But, but that would be down the road to have them come in and at least look at things and say, there's value here to go through an energy performance contract, or there's not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's helpful. Anybody else? Anything else? I will just say, Mr. Cammingliano, I am always impressed with the commitment of your department to our students and to the community. And I think the small note that you received back from somebody to say, everything went great with the trees, is really reflective of that bridge that you've built with the community and with the families. And it makes a big difference. It's, sometimes can seem like it's not as important and it's not as crucial to the work, but as I know you and the rest of your team believe, it is, it is as crucial as the rest of the work we do. And so thank you very much for all of that work that is done on behalf of all of our kids and our families.
Thank you.
All right. And that is the end of our presentation. So thank you all so very much. These were really great, well-informed and presented presentations. So thank you. And so with that, we move on to the time of the hearing for the public on non-agenda items, but I do not see any public here this evening at 9:51 on March 25th. So we will skip that portion of the agenda, but please know, we are always available to hear comments and questions. And at any time, you may always email us at rcstboard@ryeschools.org. So with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? Sean Clapper, seconded by Matt Chivonoff. Great. Let's take a look at this evening's consent agenda, consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal construction. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. And consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education. Okay, seeing no questions, all those in favor of this, of approving this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor of approving this evening's consent agenda. Mr. Stein's on board. That is seven, nothing. So on this evening's consent agenda, we have awarded the bids for the construction related to the Midland and Osborne additions, and we look forward to many updates as we get closer to the kickoff of that work. We've also adopted a resolution for work related to the Performing Arts Center, the high school gym, the music rooms at the middle school and the high school, the floors at Milton, the roof, the lighting, the ceiling, the flooring at Osborne, and the new additions. There is not one building that will not be getting some form of beautification and upgrades, and we are very excited about those opportunities. We have a memorandum of understanding with Allied Service, Allied Universal Security, as they have purchased our previous security provider, but we are happy to say, we have the same security guards, we have the same wonderful people and standards that will continue to support our safety and security measures here in the Rye City Schools. We have an approval to participate in one of my favorites, our cooperative bids with Northwestern BOSI's, which will always, which is a great segue from this evening, we're looking for ways to help contain costs. And being able to participate in this cooperative bidding process allows us to do that. It helps us with the greater buying power of being together. So that's always great to see. We have a donation that we are accepting in the amount of 1,700, no, sorry, in the amount of $172,000 from the Osborne PTO for classroom furniture for grades three to five. Perhaps maybe linking a little bit back to the work that Dr. Sassoon was talking about earlier this evening, so that's great to see. We also are accepting a donation in the amount of $9,500 from the Milton PTO to support the fifth grade play, which is always great to see, always enjoy that spring show. And that is it for this evening's consent agenda. So then, we have more. We now, we now will move on to communications to and from the board, and it is that time of the year where we have, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna push this to, yep, 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 where we have our board and district committee updates. So Facilities Committee, March 18th. Mrs. Boyle, I know you were there. Was anyone else there with you? Mrs. Aronson, great. And, woo, it was an all-star cast. So who's going to give us an update? What happened?
I'll start, and then you guys can fill in. We, we started in the iLab, and Rob went over the transfer to capital projects from the '24, '25 school year. And then we got, and then he talked about the upcoming And then we got, and then he talked about the upcoming projects. And then we did a tour through the media center. We went to the gym to see the floors that are going to be redone this summer. We went to PAC. We got to see that outdated lighting system, surround system for ourselves. And we saw the wrestling room, which looks amazing and smells great now, too. And then we were going to see the softball field, but it was too dark at that point. So we did a comprehensive tour of some of the new areas. And then Rob talked a little bit more detail about some of the upcoming projects, like the Osborne roof. We also, at the meeting besides us and Gabby and Rob, we had, I think, about three members of the community that participated on it as well, who asked a lot of great questions and had a lot of great suggestions.
Any other updates from that committee?
No.
Nope.
I think Callie got it.
All right. Excellent. All right. And this is a unique experience where there was a policy meeting, but there were no policies to discuss. So tell us, Ms. Boyle, what happened?
Uh, so we spent the entire policy meeting going through the updates that we are working on for the code of conduct. And then subsequently scheduled a, an additional policy meeting to finish those updates about the code of conduct, which we're hoping we will do in early April. And then we will have our next regularly scheduled meeting at the end of April.
And I would imagine at some point we'll all get to see the great work of the code of conduct?
Nope. I only get to see it.
Oh.
No, we will, the, with the goal is going to be to bring any of the updated changes to the full board. We also will have a public hearing for those changes. And the timing should work out where those will all be finalized prior to the start of the new school year on July 1st, so that we can use those, that updated version when it gets sent out to families and students to review and faculty to review and sign off on.
Okay. Great. We look forward to that. Okay. Any other committees that perhaps we missed? Nope. Okay. So now it is that exciting time of the year always where our board members announce their intention to seek reelection. So I'm going to take that opportunity to pass it to Ms. Boyle to go first.
You don't think we should go in alphabetical order?
No. No. I think we should go BA. We're gonna, we're mixing it up tonight.
Okay. So as, as you all know, because every time we introduce ourselves, we tell how many years we've been on the board. I've had the opportunity and privilege to serve on the Board of Education for the last nine years. It has been an incredible learning experience, not just from learning the process and just about public education, how the state of New York works. A lot of instruction and curriculum and facilities and technology and everything. It's also been the amazing people that I've had the opportunity to work with, not just sitting at, at the board table, but the administrators and building administrators, you know, from, from all the different levels. So there was a time this year where I was thinking, do, you know, how, how, is nine years enough? Because nine years is, is a while. But I have come to the conclusion that nine years isn't enough. And I have decided to run for another term for the board. That's it.
All right. Well, that's wonderful news. Very excited that nine years is in fact not enough. So as would, just luck would coincide, Ms. Boyle and I are on the same cycle. But I've only been here for six years. So I don't get to have that same struggle of nine, to say is nine enough. But six years, I will say, has truly gone in the blink of an eye. It has been amazing to come in under one experience and then have things change and flip over and come out of it and move. And the things that have happened over the last six years have been pretty extraordinary. And I am an educator by training and I most definitely am an educator by heart. And to be able to have this opportunity to be a very, very small part of the growth of the district over time, under the leadership of Dr. Byrne. And I know that there are so many amazing possibilities and experiences that are left ahead with you leaving us, but us being able to continue on and to grow and to see what comes next with our next superintendent. And I would be absolutely honored to be part of that journey. So if the community, if the citizens of Rye will have me for another three years, they'll tell me that in what, on, there we go, on May 20th. And so we'll see what happens in the meantime. And so with that, we will, and that portion, we will say. Are there any other communications to and from the board? Okay, seeking none. There will then be our next Board of Education meeting, which will take place on April 8th, where we will have budget adoption. That's right. That's great. So in the meantime, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Stein, seconded by Sean Clover, all those in favor? Seven, nothing. Have a good evening. Thank you.